Call is meeting order. Tonight we're gonna be leading the pledge by Mr. Tim Tackett.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the business with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tackett. I'd like to welcome everybody to our annual zone exemption meeting. What we're gonna do, the way we'll do it this evening is Ms. McCloud will swear everybody in. Then after that, Mr. Evans will take each appeal. And we'll let the parents speak. Mr. Odom has any comments? Then we'll go, any board recommendations or whatever. So, Ms. McCloud?
So, if you have a case, can I have your stand please? Or do you want to rock in? You swear we're from the testimony, you're about to give the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth that I have been on the stage.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Evans, I believe we've got two appeals tonight.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
We originally had three, but we had a family call us this morning and said that they're moving into the zone, so they request for it to be withdrawn, so we've withdrawn that one. That's number three on your list, so we want me doing that one tonight. No action is required by the board because they voluntarily asked for it to be withdrawn. First off, I thought I might give, since we have some board members who've not been through this process before, just to make sure you didn't have any questions about how the process works. I wanted to explain to you, the way it gets to this level is, the first level is, they apply for zone exemption. The principals make a recommendation and turn it into us. We follow board policy, and we have a list of schools that can or can't take zone exemptions. That's kind of the first level, and we go from there. They have an opportunity to appeal to Mr. Odom if they get denied. Mr. Odom then reviews their information, it's all in writing, and we issue a determination from there. And then if they want to appeal to the board, that's what this night is for. So, as of today, or as of yesterday, we had 1,263 applications that we have processed so far, and we've ended up with two appeals before the board tonight. Are there any questions I can answer for any of you? Okay. Our first appeal tonight, the parents Kevin and Shirley Bell, I'm sorry. We have a Shirley Bell that works here, that's why I said that. Parents Kevin and Shirley Bean request a zone exemption for their child who's a sophomore to attend Riverdale High School instead of Blackman High School. The student was rezoned as part of the Stewart's Creek High School rezoning, but does not qualify for the grandfather option because she is not a junior or senior next year. That is the reason she's been denied for a zone exemption because there are other students who have also been affected that way. Feel free to come out and speak.
Welcome.
My name is Shirley Bean, my daughter is Granny Bean, and we were recently pulled to stay at Riverdale High School instead of being sent to Blackman. I've got in three copies of letters from teachers. One is for golf coach, the other is for choir instructor, and the other, and the third one is for athletic teacher. All asking that Granny be an exception because she's an excellent student, she'll handle the ballums. And also, like I said, one's her coach, her golf coach, the other one is her parents, or her community member, and this for athletic teacher. Really, there's four reasons that I am, are requesting for the appeal. One is that she's in golf. She's started golf here. She, her team is very, very, at Riverdale is very, very close. The three girls started together and gotten very, very close about the field. Also because of her choir. One of her teachers is the choir instructor that I have a letter for. I don't think she's going to, if she goes to Blackman, I've talked to her about it. She says she will not want to go on to be in choir if she goes to the Blackman High School. Mostly because the teacher fits in Riverdale, Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams has inspired her. She's also, will be, if she stays at Riverdale, will be selected to go to women's row, which is the next step up to choir. She's inspired her to do things outside her comfort zone. In other words, she sang a solo by herself in front of a lot of people. That's not in her comfort zone. She's kind of a little bit of a shy person when it comes to public speaking or being out in front of, alone in public. She's also, Ms. Williams has improved her ability to read music and also inspired her to work hard on improving her voice tone level and just being an all-around team player at choir. The second reason is an apparent, I'm kind of worried about her academic by switching, by switching school. I've also got a copy of her work card. Her year-to-date GPA is a 3.5714, she's pop. She's, I've also got a copy of a academic achievement award that she received this year from the school. She's gonna be a sophomore. Grades count and scholarships and everything else in what comes to college. Grades count in high school. The third reason is, she does, if she stays at Riverdale and I'm not able to get her to and from school because sometimes I have a flexible work schedule, but sometimes I work really, really early in the morning. If she misses the bus, I have another way to get her to Blackman. I have four ways to get her to Riverdale. Coming home, if she misses the bus to come home, Riverdale, I have her to home, Blackman, I don't. Because sometimes I will get sent up up to 11 o'clock at night. The third and final reason is, we were for at Rockville now school. She made friends at Rockville. Some of the friends didn't mind going to Riverdale instead of Blackman because those were not the friends that I all wanted her to be around all the time. Just go to Blackman and don't really want her going to Blackman just because in that environment with the friends, she ends up being a follower rather than leader, and she's gotten in trouble for it. She's gotten in trouble for being a part of that group. At the, her friends at Riverdale, she has a tendency to be a leader and not a follower. And I just think the overall benefits per se at Riverdale are gonna outweigh for going to Blackman. Even though the academics may be good or better at Blackman, I just think the overall benefits are better for her as an individual student for to stay at Riverdale. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Ms. Odom, do you have any comments?
Basically, we denied it because it was a sibling rule, she did not apply. That did not apply to her because she was one of the junior seniors. So, basically with our zoning process, it was denied on that basis.
And we've had a number of students who were also rezoned because of the Stewart's Creek High rezoning, and this would maybe precedent, if we did it for one, there'd be others that would want the same. Because there, I mean, there were other students who didn't want to leave Riverdale to go to Blackman because of the rezoning, which is typical.
Any board members?
If, if we, are you aware that if you were granted a zone exemption, then bus transportation would be a non-issue?
Like I said, if she misses the bus, I have four ways to get her to Riverdale. I have no way to get her to Blackman. All of her friends in my housing district are staying at Riverdale because they're, they're all her siblings. I've got, like I said, I've got four ways to get her to school. All she has to do is call one of those friends if she's on the way to Riverdale. I don't have anybody in, in the district that stays, that's going to Blackman.
Just the same, I'm a little concerned of your understanding that, you know, you continue to phrase it, and if she misses the bus, the bus won't be running to Riverdale. The bus will be running to Blackman?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that was the point I was gonna make. She, she can't miss the bus to Riverdale because there won't be one.
Well, what I'd say is she misses the bus to Blackman, I have no way to get her because I may not be home.
Sure, sure. I think we just need to be cognizant of the fact that you've made the point of 1,263 zone exemptions, and those are the, those are the people that we also need to be responsible to. There are exceptional, when I say that, something outside the bounds that fall into categories that I think we have to pay close attention to. There's gonna be great athletics, golf at choir at Blackman, there's gonna be outstanding academics there, all those kind of things that are in place. I've seen over and over, I'm a former teacher, and I was at Laverne when Laverne High School opened in 1988, and there was a, a lot of kids there that were there because they were forced to be there. And I found the largest majority of those people, after just a few weeks, found that their new home, their new school was something they could embrace. I can't find anything here that is exceptional, that would not put us in jeopardy with hundreds of students and parents if we were to accept this request and deny all these others that have been there.
Clark?
This is probably our most difficult job. There's no one on this board that would not like for any student to go to whatever school that they, they would like to go to. But we're growing, we continue to grow, and we do not have some consistency in zones. You know, it becomes, you know, completely overcrowded over here, maybe not over here. So, it's awfully difficult decision to make. And like Mr. Tackett said, historically, we've always looked for compelling reasons. And although they're so important to you, and they really are important to us because we want your child to excel in our system, but it's, we just-
But I will say, Riverdale's within walking distance, Blackman's not.
But she's, she's gonna be disciplined, and she's gonna, she's gonna make the bus. So, based on our comments, I'm gonna move to deny it. Mr. Chairman?
A second.
I'm sorry.
Got a motion by Mr. Blair, and a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion? Ms. Odom?
The, the zone exemptions that we would potentially grant this evening are not, the appeals process has been available to all 1,263.
Yes, sir.
Is there potential that others would, you know, you say we set a precedent, we set a precedent for next year, or we set a precedent that next month we'll have additional zone exemptions? The zone exemption calendar allows for a, you know, a single time period. Am I correct?
In board policy, they have 10 days to appeal from the day they're receiving their letter, so there is a time limit on it.
Right.
But yes, it could be, there are some that would still be in that window that have turned them in more recently. And then you would also be potentially opening up for next school year, the next year.
Mr. Tackett?
In terms of consistency, to kind of answer that question, precedent to me, a precedent's already been set. We, this is actions the board has taken consistently to try to stay within these guidelines for several years. And, you know, I, I had someone in a similar situation ask me, you know, what, what, what will I need to bring to the table? I said, you're gonna have to bring, I like the word compelling, something compelling that would, that would make not only that, but, Mr. Holiday, I think that the precedent we set is if, if we grant this one, then I feel compelled to grant every other person in the same category that says, well, I've got a sport that's good for me, I've got, a coach is good for me, I, teachers are good for me, all those kind of things. And I'm sure that's gonna be the case with, with lots and lots and lots of people. I'm convinced, or otherwise I would not be voting the way I'm gonna vote, I'm convinced that there will be excellent teachers and coaches at Blackman academically. She will, if she can be successful academically at Riverdale, there's no question she can be academically as good at Blackman, excel. We grandfather back from upcoming juniors and seniors because we recognize how much of that bond, we draw the line in soft forms, recognizing that they still are gonna have three years to build those bonds at their newer school. So, I do think we set a dangerous precedent for those in the past, those that we denied this year, and certainly for those that we would, would need to come for us next year.
Mr. Blair mentioned a compelling hardship. Typically, those, the most severe ones tend to be medical, and they're pretty rare. An example that I always give is that a few years ago, when Smyrna High School wasn't able to take zone exemptions, we had a student who had seizures multiple times a week, and his condition was such that he had to go to the hospital immediately because it was potentially life-threatening. His mother worked a mile from Smyrna High School, and Stonecrest Medical Center was so close to that that she asked for a zone exemption so that she could quickly leave her job, get him, and then get him over to the hospital. And she was able to document all that with, you know, medical, from doctors and things like that. That's the kind of hardships that we're looking for, and they're pretty rare. So, when you say compelling hardship, those are the ones that we really look for. Transportation reasons, childcare, that's a hardship that a lot of parents face. I face it. It's so common that it's hard to grant a zone exemption based on those sorts of things.
Ms. Bean, have you moved in the last year to this location where you're at now? So, you were at the same place you were last year?
We bought this, this place, Riverdale High School.
Now, did, did you have to have a zone waiver from us, the board, last year?
No.
Okay.
This family was rezoned because of the, the, kind of the domino effect from Stewart's Creek High School. We moved some from Riverdale back over to Blackman.
Okay.
And that's what affected this family.
Anyone else?
Just before we do a vote, my concern is that we mentioned the precedent that is being set, and it really is genuine. And the board members don't see 1,260, we see three, or actually two this evening. And so, those are the ones that we can consider, and, you know, what those compelling reasons are and those kind of things. You've stated your, you presented yourself very well, and I'm really conflicted by the decision. I want to make sure that you understand that in addition to your specific circumstances, we do have these additional pressures of supporting decisions we've made for zoning for all students, supporting the staff that have reviewed the documents, supporting the director of schools that has signed off on the decisions that we have indicated as a board are the direction that we would like to go. We represent not only the interest of the school board, but also the interest of the community. And for me, that's really where the conflict comes in. It's very, very unfortunate that the circumstances have presented themselves just the way they have. But I'll, I'll share at this time that I'll support the motion to deny.
All right, Ms. Michael, call roll, please.
Mr. Nipper?
I support it.
The motion?
The motion.
Mr. Blair?
So, so we're basically voting to support my-
To deny.
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Holiday?
Yes.
Ms. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Motion passes, to deny.
Ms. Bean, we appreciate you coming. Mr. Evans, appeal number two, please.
Okay. Parents Kim and James Potts request a zone exemption for their child who's a sophomore to attend Stewart's Creek High School instead of Smyrna High School. In an attempt to maintain the zone lines approved by the school board in December 2012 and to avoid draining Smyrna and Laverne High Schools, Mr. Odom has not been approving zone exemptions out of those schools except for severe hardship situations, which are typically medical, which are rare. The principals made this request after, after the rezoning was approved in December.
Ms. Potts, welcome.
Hi, Kim. Emily's mom, and we researched that in, with Smyrna and Stewart's Creek, that Emily, the only school that Emily wants to attend that offers the dental pathway is Stewart's Creek. She has a real hot passion of learning, of wanting to deal with the dental field, and she needs all the hands-on experience that she can get to pursue her career when she graduates so she can learn, you know, people disability. I hope that living in our neighborhood would not stop her from getting into a school which could grow her knowledge in the field that she wants to pursue. We were instructed that she could, or we could re-appeal her senior year, and I think that would be very harmful for her, for Emily to leave her senior year at Smyrna even if she got a zone exemption to go to Stewart's Creek just to pursue her, her dream. And so, we're just asking that y'all would listen to our appeal to let her go to Stewart's Creek so she can take the dental class her senior year. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Mr. Odom, do you want to comment?
Basically, once again, we did not approve transfers out of Laverne or Smyrna High to try to maintain the balance. I did some additional checking on this. We do have the dental hygiene program at Stewart's Creek High. We will not be offering that course next year because we just do not have enough students. Any course that you, if you take medical therapeutics, and I think you're one of our nurses too, so, medical therapeutics or one of the other medical courses, you take those health science, you take two of those health science, and then that third year, you can take the dental hygiene course. Some things that we have done in the past to do this, if you only need that course, we used to try to schedule it either first in the morning or afternoon sometime. We do allow students sometimes to come and take that course, but that would probably be her senior year that she would do that. But the motion right now is basically to deny because I think we've got an option down the road that we may be able to accommodate. We have 20-something students that was made requests similar to this in Smyrna High. So, again, there's some precedents here that, that basically we have denied on that basis, to, to again, try to maintain some of that balance. But, but it's not lost if she doesn't go next year. That's the point I'm trying to make.
I just would hate to ask her, you know, I mean, just like you granted the juniors and seniors that want to stay at the school that they were zoned for this past year. And, you know, or, I don't know, she'll have a car, you know, her senior year to drive to Stewart's Creek to take that one course. We hope she does. But that's three more years, thirteen more years down the road.
Any board members? Ms. Odom?
Is the dental program offered elsewhere other than Stewart's Creek? Okay.
You have a number of CTE programs, like cosmetology, Laverne High, and Oakland High. So, we, because of cost of programs, very often there's sometimes we have some that are not offered multiple places.
And it's not being offered anywhere next year?
No, I mean, it's, it's not offered next year as, the, the senior course is not being offered next year for that.
Mr. Blair?
But you did say that many times we've made, made it where they, they could go first thing in the morning or, or first thing-
The last period, the day or something like that. Yeah, we've done that in the past.
So, there's, there are some accommodations that we've done in the past to, to meet that need.
I know two or three years ago, we did it when Oklahoma Middle opened up, and we, I think we allowed some to go to Seagull to take a class or some, or vice versa, one or the other. So, I know we did it in the past just for that class.
Is, is Emily currently involved or enrolled in a CT track?
Um, no, not right yet.
Mr. Tackett?
I have a couple thoughts. First, I very strongly support the board's decision, Mr. Odom's decision, the principal's decisions at these schools to not allow drainage to take place from schools. We've seen in the past how that can be an adverse situation to schools. So, I think that's a, something that needs to be done. That said, we have to look at individual things, we can't look at everything, do that kind of. But we do have CT classes that traditionally have been kind of the volleyball back and forth. And, and one of the difficult things that we have is, is even back when it was just open Riverdale, kids wanted to kind of go back and forth in that regard. I think historically, we've been able to hold firm where we're at at this point in time, but allow those options. Clearly, given the fact that, that the class that not even offered next year wouldn't be there, then I can't find any way that I could support a move on something that would happen two years from now or three years from now at that point in time. You know, she, if it comes to that point and she's able to come back at her senior year and had the option to go back and forth, I, I think that'd be a great option for her. I hope, I hope she could take advantage of that. But that would be a family decision you'll have to make, and you talk about, you know, if the transportation were to be available, would she want to be able to do that and so forth? You know, if it's important enough to her, I would hope that's what she would choose to do. But based upon, you know, what I'm seeing here, especially with the delay in place, I can't find a way that I could support that.
The reason they're not offering is because there's not gonna be enough seniors in that Stewart's Creek. But by the time my daughter gets up there, there should be handful.
Yeah, I'm sure it'd be multiple periods per day, I would say, to accommodate that.
Can I ask one quick question real quick? If she's not gonna have transportation as a senior, what's gonna be her transportation as a junior?
Um, I work at Vanderbilt Children's Hospital, so I can get her to school early and then go in at 10 o'clock in the, in the morning. So, and then stay till seven at night. And so, I can get her to school, and then I wouldn't be able to get her back to Smyrna. I can get her to Stewart's Creek, you see what I'm saying? And then she likes to do cheerleading and volleyball, so she would be staying after school until my husband got off of work at home and worried he'd need to pick her up from school.
Makes for a long day.
Um, you can just go watch, long days.
If she's as active as she sounds like she's gonna be, she's gonna have long days with cheerleading.
Yeah.
That's how he's not here today.
And that's a good thing.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Anybody else?
Ready for motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Got a motion by Mr. Tackett. You got a second?
I'll see.
Got a second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion?
Did you say that you're currently a school nurse?
Um, I'm here.
No, you're a Vanderbilt Children's-
At Vanderbilt Children's.
Okay, all right, sorry.
You wrote in your letter, you've done some PRN with us there, I think.
I did, uh-huh. And for two years, they never called me to come fill in, so I've had to get needed.
We didn't have many that, that actually, I was surprised at the low number when it came along.
It was a low number.
Anybody else? Call roll, Ms. Michael.
Mr. Tackett?
Yes, the motion is to deny.
To deny.
Yes, I support the motion, yes.
Mr. Holiday?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Nipper?
Yes.
Mr. Blair?
Yes.
Ms. Blankenship?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Motion passes, to deny.
Ms. Potts, we appreciate you coming. Mr. Evans, that's to you. I just want to say thank you for the good job you do in, in going through all these. 1,200 is an awful lot, and I know sometimes it's a thankless job that you, you go through with a lot of the people. But I just want to tell you, I appreciate it, and I'm sure each board member does the same thing. Would you, would you like to comment any further on any of your numbers?
Sure, I would. Mr. Holiday, I believe, asked for some information about breakdown of some of the numbers, and so I pulled some of those. These are as of yesterday, and I want to go over them when you just saw. Especially for board members who've been in this process before, they understand the numbers a little bit because the raw numbers don't always tell the story. So, as I said, this is as of, this is as of yesterday. We processed 1,263 zone exemption applications- We processed twelve hundred and sixty-three zone exemption applications since February first. Uh, Mr. Odom did open it up earlier this year and put a priority consideration deadline in of, of April fifteenth, and that helped tremendously. Normally, we, we are still receiving just bucket loads of zone exemptions at the end of the school year, and, and that really cut down this year. And it allowed Mr. Zago and Mr. Odom to prepare more for next school year because they know how many teachers we need, textbooks, things like that. So that really, really helped, and I hope that we repeat that in the, in the future. But we've done twelve hundred and sixty-three. Uh, you'll notice that it says a hundred and four, or eleven hundred and fourteen of those have been approved, uh, and a hundred and forty-nine have been denied. Uh, fourteen of those have sent, of the approvals have since been withdrawn by the parents. Typically, those are the ones who were taking the grandfather option to stay at their existing school, and then for some reason or another, they, they decided to withdraw that either for transportation hardships or childcare or something like that. The numbers seem high on the approval side, but the reason that's so high this year is if you look down below that I broke it down for you, nearly six hundred of those were just the ones taking the grandfather or the sibling option. And we require them to do a zone exemption application just for tracking purposes and so we can just make sure they qualify for what the board has approved. A hundred and sixty are for employees, those will be classified or certified. Twenty-four for the IB program at, uh, Oakland High School. Nine so far have turned in contracts on homes. That means that they're moving into another school zone before the first semester's over. We go ahead and let them go to their new school so they don't have to change the, the children in the middle of the year. And then the other twelve would be upperclassmen, typically seniors, eighth graders or fifth graders. Those that are in their last year, they've moved or something like that, and we want them to be able to finish out their last year before going on to the next school. So if you take those out, we've had only three hundred and forty-one this year that have been approved for some other reason. Typically, those are schools that aren't overcrowded, like, uh, Kitchell or, uh, Whitworth McCanna Middle School or something like that. And usually, they're helping us out by parents taking those zone exemptions because they're helping relieve overcrowding in another school. And so that, that's in line with board policy. You have any questions about those numbers?
Mr. Nipper?
Uh, let me ask you about the twenty-four IB ones that are going to Oakland. Are you going to be tracking them throughout the year? Like, uh, I've been heard where the, they get, they go into the IB program, go out for football, then they drop IB.
The board put a protection in place a few years ago, and I know Mr. Hodge remembers this. There did, there, there aren't really any prerequisites to get into, to IB. And so there were some accusations that people were just going over there for sports reasons. And at the time, Oakland had lots of space, so we, we actually wanted students to go to Oakland because it was helping relieve overcrowding at Siegel and Laverne and things like that. So the board adopted a motion that put in the same minimum standards that you would have to apply for one of the magnet schools. Uh, and I can't quote those off the top of my head, but, you know, the eightieth percentile, things like that. And that cut down on a lot of that. We don't track them necessarily to make sure they go into the IB program because you may have a student that starts in ninth grade and they had every intention of going into IB program, and they get to their junior year, for whatever reason, they don't, they don't do it. Uh, they may have lost interest or, or something like that. And, uh, like I said, Oakland has the room, so, uh, we don't necessarily kick them out for that reason. Uh, I've never had a principal ask me about a specific athlete that's in that situation, so it's hard to say specifically. Uh, does that make sense to you?
There's, there's two kinds of IB. Um, students can complete the course and get an IB certificate. Or you can get an IB diploma. An IB diploma is that big test that's sent overseas to be graded and that sort of thing, you know? So you, you have a number, I remember at their graduation, you have some students that were receiving an IB certificate, which means either they didn't get quite high enough score to get the diploma, or may have in the end elected, they, they completed the IB coursework, but they elected not to take that major test at the end, uh, you know? And then you have the ones that actually, actually, no one knew at the time of the graduation, because I don't know that they know today even whether they passed the IB diploma or not. It take, it's, it's sometime up in the summer before we get it back.
Well, I, I know that, and have been asked about, uh, that some kids will go into the IB program, they go out for football and drop IB. They're doing it just to get into Oakland's football program. And, uh, you know, because Oakland has a great, great football program, I mean, everybody...
He was here that night.
They, they want to get into. And I, and I was just concerned that, you know, once we let them over there because of IB, we don't, and then they drop it, why do we keep letting them in there, you know?
I'll just, I might comment to that, uh, to a degree, I guess. Uh, the night everything, all that was brought up, Mrs. Spurlock was here. And I think the, the board relayed at that time, uh, that, that it was not to happen. So, uh, yeah, I like to go on the assumption that, uh, 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 that that's what's, it's not taking place.
Right.
Because I, I remember, uh, we had, uh, it was brought up about, uh, a lot of students getting in Oakland, uh, about the IB requirements and all of that. So we went, the principals, uh, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think the principals got together and they set up the standards and the board basically approved. And Mr. Spurlock was here at the meeting that night, so, uh, whether it's happening, uh, you know, I can't say. But I, uh, I really feel like Mr. Spurlock's not going to allow it. That's, that's my opinion.
Well, Mr. Spurlock, uh, he, he's a good man, and, you know, I trust, trust his judgment and the, and the board's judgment on that.
I'm sure, you know, if you want to mention it to him, you know, if you had somebody question on it, uh, he'd be happy for you, so.
Okay. He said that night he would monitor it, I do remember that.
Well, that's good.
I remember, because it was a big issue one night, and that's when they did add all the criteria on. I mean, three or four years ago.
Yeah, I felt like Mr. Spurlock initiated it and, and welcomed it just to take any hint of, of rumor or any priority, uh, you know, with that, with that. So I'm, I'm comfortable that, that, you know? If you have good grades and, and you want to attempt something as difficult as IB, I just want to encourage you to do it, because I, I've talked to a lot, a number of students that have gone through that program, and, uh, and it is challenging.
There was a fellow called me yesterday that used to teach in California, and he's retired from there, but he's living back here. And, and I was telling him we had the IB program. He calls me every few months or something for some reason. But anyway, he said, um, I think it's, if they finish the IB program there in California, they enter as a sophomore into their system for college.
Wow.
So they, they're doing something really special, um, there.
Well, I know standards, the minimum standards are not low.
Right.
So that weeds out a lot of things. And we've had a few that have applied and didn't meet the standards, and the principal said no, and everybody understood why, and we moved on from there. But, I mean, we can all remember, it wasn't that long ago that people didn't want to go to Oakland. We, we, we remember that. And it's just, it's turned around so much in the last few years. Uh, I, I, they've done a phenomenal job out there.
I guess I've gotten confused here a little bit. I thought a few minutes ago, we said there really aren't any standards to getting into the IB program?
There, there aren't any, but the board adopted some just to, to cut out anybody who was going only for athletics. The, the board...
The international IB does not have a set standard to get in. They have courses that have to be completed. But our board adopted standards for you to be considered...
Okay.
For transfer to an IB program.
Okay.
Very similar to the way we did transferring into a magnet.
Okay. Um, is there space at all of our high schools, uh, at this point with the, uh, introduction of Stewart's Creek High School? Are we at a place where there is capacity at every high school that could accept a zone exemption?
Uh, Riverdale and Blackman are still considered at capacity. Blackman is going to take a few years for the grandfathering to shake out. And even then, with the growth in that area, it'll probably still be over capacity. Uh, Siegel High School is still on the list this year, but we've discussed it. Their numbers have actually dropped to a point where we may be able to open that up in the near future to accept some zone exemptions. We'll set to see how the growth does in that area. Uh, but otherwise, Oakland, Laverne, Smyrna, uh, Eagleville, those four schools can all take zone exemptions. I feel like I was left one out.
Your central magnet, your, your central magnet, um, probably reduce some numbers. The other, because we now have approximately two hundred, two twenty-five per grade. So that's what changed some of the things at Siegel and some things like that.
I think Dr. Ash told me at Central Magnet that he could, he could take some ninth graders, but not eighth and seventh graders. He was over waiting list for them.
Well, we made the entry requirements at, at sixth grade, and then it's, has to be reconsidered before they enter the ninth grade. And that was done specifically to help your city students, basically, because very often they stay to most of their cities they can through sixth grade. So, um, class size does change at seventh grade, you know, goes up by five students. So you accommodate some more. But we also wanted to be that people that could not, uh, maybe have another opportunity to enter at the high school level, so they tend to be at sixth grade and ninth grade.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Of the hundred and forty-nine denied, what percentage would you be able to share possibly were underclassmen that did not qualify for grandfathering?
Uh, I don't have the number, I can't quote it, but it's a small percentage. Most people, because we advertised as what it was, they understand that. We, we've been trying to be more open and transparent about the process. The, the actual application we've been using for the last two or three years, on the back of that form, lists the schools that are at capacity and explains to parents we can approve zone exemption. And that, and that right alone knocks out half of them, because they just don't even apply or they look for a school that has a run. I get calls all the time saying, "Well, I want Blackman High, but I see it's on the list. How about Eagleville, for example?" And we're able to go that way.
Excellent.
Uh, but very few applied, uh, that, that were not, that did, that did not qualify for the grandfather option. I would say fewer than thirty. I did find the standards for Oakland that, that the board adopted. They have to, students have to have a cumulative GPA of three point oh in five core sub areas, math, language arts, reading, social studies and science, and score at or above the eightieth percentile in two reporting areas on the most recent TCAP or Explorer test. So th- those are not low standards at all.
Mr. Tackett?
I'll pass.
James, I guess, uh, uh, on these five hundred and six, sixty-eight that are grandfathered and the one sixty employees, now, do they have to, uh, reapply for that every year?
Most of them don't. Classified employees, we require them reapply every year just so we can verify they're still where they, where they were the year before. And we had to take that stance a few years ago because, uh, I remember specifically at Siegel, we had some people who would get a job in the cafeteria just to get a zone exemption. They would work a month and then quit just to get their kids in. And so we put that rule in, and that cut that out pretty quickly. Certified employees, it's typically a little harder to get a certified position because it requires a teaching license. And so you can't get one as readily as you would necessarily a classified employee, depending on what the position is, of course.
So out of these five sixty-eight, you won't see anything on them anymore in the future years, probably?
No, sir. Once we improve those grandfather, uh, unless they would want to withdraw it, we won't see them again, and they'll just naturally roll off as they graduate. And that, those numbers also include the thirty or so that, or the, the five or six that we grandfathered for Blackman Elementary School. Because remember, we, we kept fifth graders and their siblings, we allowed them to stay as well.
Seven or eight, she told me, exercise that, something like that.
Yeah, it was curious.
Thirty-five or so we had.
Mr. Tackett?
I, I think that speaks back to consistency we talked about too, uh, or the president that you said. I think we have set a precedent as a board over the years that it's going to be very difficult to, to get through the waiver process, to make that happen. The directors of schools have been that way, and I think the boards have supported it that way. Not that you want to be hardline and be unfair, but I think that most people do recognize that the, the likelihood of getting a zone exemption are very, very small. I think, I think because of our process and transparency, I think is there. Television probably helps people recognize that it, it, it's just not something that is likely to be passed or they don't even go through the process. And that's, not that you want, again, we don't want to be hardline about it, but at the same time, that's what the zones are set for, to try to provide schools that do. We can provide the best education because we have schools that are balanced. That's what we need.
And when someone gets denied for a zone exemption, I think they always put the reason in there so they understand why they're getting denied, instead of just getting a blanket statement that says you've been denied, and, and then that encourages them to appeal because they don't understand why they were denied. So that's another thing we've done, and I think that's, that's helped cut down on the appeals as well.
I think that it's relevant, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, Tim. Uh, I, I think that it's appropriate and relevant for the conversation here at the board appeal to be, uh, a, a real conversation and not, uh, based solely on that precedent. And that's what I've tried to do in carefully examining some of the details, some of the compelling, uh, uh, offers of explanation so that the public knows that, uh, it is considered carefully and thoughtfully, even in the short period that it's here before the board. Uh, it's gone through quite a process up to this point. And, uh, you know, if it were, uh, just summarily dismissed by the board, uh, we may not give the right impression that we're considering it completely. So, uh, my intentions are in no way to question what, uh, the staff and, and Mr. Odom have done, but s- to certainly indicate to these people a careful consideration of what they've shown us, so.
I think we haven't put it at the skin.
Yeah, good.
Questions come all the time.
Super.
Well, the board, the boards have approved some in the past. I mean, that happens too. Sometimes there'll be new information come up at, at zone here that was not necessarily in the original appeal.
All right, in regards to that, Mr. Odom, I have to say, over my period of time here, there have been a few occasions, I, I voted against the director.
Yeah.
And needless to say, I got, I got beat out anyhow, but... But that's, that, my decision, you know, based on what I read and, uh, uh, looked at the whole situation. So there's times that board members do, uh, you know, feel strongly one way or another. So I will say that I voted against the director several times and, and come up on the losing end, so.
Mr. Tackett?
We know, but just by going through the rezoning, how passionate people are to stay at their schools. And we understand that, I understand that. Uh, but I can also be comfortable in fact that, I've got two granddaughters now. I had two children go through. My granddaughter's going to change school next year, because she's going from fifth to sixth grade. When she gets to eighth grade, she's going to change schools again, she's going to go to high school. It, it's part of the process, and I try to share with parents, and I say this to all now. They can make a difference as to whether that child does or does not accept that change. The child almost always accepts a change. Typically, it's more, much more difficult for the parent to accept a change. And if a parent can accept a change, accept it, don't have to embrace it, don't have to like it. But I do think they have to accept and learn to embrace it. They'll accept that change ninety-nine percent of the time. I think you'd agree with this. The child, by the time they get to their brand-new school, two weeks later, they, they've met those new friends, they've met those new rides to get them from cheerleading practice. They've met those new teachers that are going to make a special difference in their lives. They'll allow that to happen. It will happen. But outside of Eagle, K through twelve school, everybody in our system's going to go through at least three changes of schools and three changes of whatever, and it's, I think it's healthy. I don't want to force it on anybody, but I think it's healthy because it, it causes us to recognize that life has changes, and we have to adopt new friends, we have to make new, new allies and, and all those kind of things. So it's not the reason to deny an appeal, but we know people are passionate, like the two ladies here. They, they have, they have, in their minds, compelling reasons for their children, and I accept that, I understand that. Uh, but, uh, I, I'm satisfied in both those cases, they'll be, they'll, they'll be fine, and I certainly hope so.
Sometimes I've seen it, it's harder on the parents than it is the students. The students adapt very quickly. I have had parents come back before, uh, you know, after a year or two, saw a lot of them in the community, and they say it was the best thing that ever happened, and they had a great time. So, uh, you know, it, it tends to work out.
Anybody else?
Uh, there is the possibility that we would have a, another appeal or so that comes in later, you know, this month. And we, if that happens, we'll put it on the July board meeting. Uh, I don't expect a, a lot more because we've only had a few come in during June, so, uh, there's, but there's always that chance.
Anybody else?
On the agenda tonight, uh, uh, we had a fourth item, which I think Jeff had put on there, the proposed two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget. Uh, there's no need to do anything on that at this time, correct, Ms. Michael?
Correct.
Okay.
Last night, the Budget and Finance Committee did vote to send basically their proposal, same one you had before, to go to the full commission. They will meet next week to set a tax rate to meet that and all. Um, then again, on Friday, the twenty-ninth, um, there'll be a vote, and there'll probably be, could possibly be amendments to the budget. So if that happens, we'll have to come back. They'll prob- it's probably going to be in July to kind of see what happens, and then we'll have to align our budget again if they change the dollar amount for the schools, so.
All right. Next week, we, we've got two meetings next week, work session regular.
Monday and Wednesday.
Monday and Wednesday, and next week, so, uh, five o'clock both nights.
Correct.
Correct, okay. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned.